It's five o'clock, we've got a tight schedule since we have another meeting here in an hour. So if we can get right into it, I'm just going to turn it over to somebody else since Mike Peter's not working anymore.
All right, mine's not being cooperative either, but good evening again, everybody. Tonight, we were going to spend some time talking to you guys about the middle school concept as far as grade configurations and also what that concept means. We've spent some time on the facility master plan and got feedback from the community as we approached that vote in November. And then this was one of the major points for us in determining how we take on some of those next facility projects. And so the teaching and learning team has put together some information and then we'll kind of end part of the presentation with more of the operational side of some of that. They may have changed the order on me a little bit, but they'll do a great job of the presentation. And then remember, next week, we're going to focus more on early childhood education and preschool when we do that at the ed committee meeting. And so we'll kind of talk about current status at that ed committee meeting and then also plans for the future. But tonight's going to be mostly on this grade level configuration conversation focused at the middle level. So with that, I'll let Amy and Nick take it away.
Yeah, so we've got about the first half of the presentation and Matt really covered the first two slides, which is going to start with teaching and learning and end up with operations and management side of things here. The first several slides that we're going to walk you through are really just some data and some research that we've been able to bring in regarding middle school. We're going to be careful not to try to call it middle school concept and call it middle school configuration right now because middle school concept has its own sort of connotation with what goes along with that. So right now, we're really just talking about what would happen or what's the research been saying around students in grade six for eight. And this particular slide just shows you what's happened over the last almost 50 years in the United States. And you can see that middle school has increased by 446 percent, you know, of the 13,000 roughly schools in America. And during that same period, you saw the decline of the junior high schools by 60 percent from 7,800 to 25. And as we've been looking at this, we're drawing a lot of our information from the Hanover Report who's gone out and done a deep dive with EBSO and several other searches, Eric searches and things like that. We've done a little bit with good old Google as well. We try to cite our sources here. And that last bullet point really is what we're seeing in the research, which is there's no universally agreed upon best practice for grade span configuration. Office school districts are doing it based out of need or desire to want some sort of change happening. You can see those top two bullets just talk about maybe you're doing it to leverage organizational structural elements or maybe you're trying to do some things around student achievement, school efficiency, things like that. So this slide was put together just to really show, and if we could take a deep dive into each of these school districts, you'd see that even in our local area, we're not all necessarily set up the same. Lynn Marsh recently added some five, six buildings and they've got several transitions going on for those students. And that's one thing I would say is if you read the Hanover Report, which we've also attached to the Word doc tonight, you're going to see what the research says about transitions. What you don't want to do is have your students involved in several transitions. I know at one point, we've been quoting the idea of preschool centers and addresses that in the report as well. The more, the minimal amount of transitions, the better for our students. Well, Nick, let me check up from here.
Yeah, and then I think that, you know, and that was one of the points in this one, as you look in there, as you look at like the last piece where it talks about on this slide, you know, this study that there is one out there that says grade six students do perform a little better when they are in elementary schools. But part of that is potentially influenced by where those transitions occur, right? So then, you know, some of those drawbacks for the students that are experiencing that transition happen in seventh grade versus sixth grade. So, and there's just some simple factors in that last one there. But I think generally speaking, you know, the data, there's just not a lot around just the configuration piece. We'll get into a little bit more about some of the instructional model in the next few slides and that talks a little bit differently. There's some things that we could explore there. And as we were thinking through this and looking through this, probably one of the most critical pieces related to middle schools is just looking at the relationships that can be built during this timeframe. And that was something that we heard from a lot of you the last time we were together. You know, in our current setup, in our current arrangement with two grade levels, some of those relationships is a little more difficult to develop. So if you look at the next one on here, and that's probably one of the most critical pieces is thinking about this age group and the adolescents at this time. And this is a time where maybe they won't admit it because if we have, you know, if you're like me, I have a current junior high student, they may not admit this is a critical time for them to develop those relationships and have those supports in place. But it is a critical time for them to have those things and develop those positive relationships, have those opportunities. So by us looking at expanding that beyond those two years, it's giving just more opportunities at that particular key grade level to build those positive relationships. And look at how, you know, it really, this is one point that Amy has continued to bring up in our conversations around this is, you know, currently our junior highs, 50% of the building is moving out at all times, right? 50%. So looking at having an opportunity where that seventh grade year could be a little more stable for our students. They're not worried about, you know, oh, I just came from an elementary school or I'm on my way to a high school. It's, oh, I am just part of my middle school or my junior high or whatever it may be. So having that stability in there and allowing people to develop some of those relationships. And how we structure that can really enhance that opportunity as well for the students to be able to make some connections with different adults and finding ways to build those supports. Because as we do know, there may not be data that talks about configurations having great success, but we do know that relationships are key to kids being successful in school, you know, supporting their academics, supporting their social, emotional, behavioral health, supporting that feeling of belonging in a school like this is my school, I'm connected to it, which then entail also helps in some of the behavioral things as well. So, you know, that's a critical component that I think we'd want to lean into in this is just thinking about how important those relationships are. And not just with adults, but the next slide even talks about how the peer relationships are also so critical at this age. Having some of those peer-to-peer partnerships and acceptance and how that can positively influence. I mean, if you think through your own probably junior high experience, you can feel some of that middle school angst or whatever it might be, some of those challenges that you're working through. But how, when they have those quality peer supports and how we can put kids together to develop positive relationships in that sense as well. You know, it can have some really, as the last quote talks about, it predicts many things related to the health and wellbeing and emotional and behavioral engagement. So we see that as another serious benefit in this. So beyond the relationships, that's when we start getting into, you know, what this could look like and what it could look like from a, and that was what Amy was referring to in the beginning. We don't want to say a middle school concept because that actually has a whole bunch of things that go along with that as to what that looks like. And this would be the time, as we look at some of these, you know, if we were to move in this direction, then we want to engage all of our different educators as to what would be the best way to provide instruction to the students. And that's where we're going to make the difference, right? It's not about the grade configuration, it's really about what are we doing with the kids in the setting? How can we best work with this age group? So looking at, I mean, we could look at having a similar self-contained model, which is currently what we do in our sixth grade. You could have kids just come over and essentially be in a classroom with a classroom teacher. Or it could look a little bit different, something where you're working with houses or teams or different things where the students are clustered together and interacting with one another to help develop those relationships. Or it could even look like what we're kind of currently doing in our junior highs, which is more kind of departmentalized, right? You're going to all these different schedules. So we have a lot of options that we could look at instructionally within this format and it could look, you know, it could look different. We were kind of given a preview to our junior high principals today. And we were even talking about how it could look even a little different maybe in sixth grade and what those needs are than what it needs to look like as an eighth grader who's now going to be going to high school the following year. So those are some things that we'd want to engage in if we were to go down this route. There's some really nice curriculum options as well we could look at, as well as the grade spans across the state are set up in six, eight bands. That's how it's kind of set up. That's what's considered the middle school age frame. And we can look at what are those exploratories or what are those electives that students are involved in? You know, as they go through elementary, they've had those same experiences, you know, for seven years or whatever it may be. This would be an opportunity to really give them some different opportunities. And talking about those interdisciplinary teams and how we could get our teachers working together to support those relationships with our kids as well. You know, the nice part too, looking at when they're in a, you know, we work through a variety of unique challenges at times with some of our performance music with sixth graders being the elementary. You know, what could that look like? How could those things be looked at differently? What are some clubs we could offer? If you're wondering, sports wouldn't be a part of this. Sports really don't begin until a seventh grade level, so that's just something to be aware of. But I think the most critical piece again is just how we can best support this transition. Amy, anything else from the teaching and learning before we hand it over to our friends? There you go.
Sure, so a couple of operational pieces, you know, we've got to make staffing adjustments. You're moving a whole grade level into a different setting. It's really connected to what Nick just talked about. So it's difficult to say what those adjustments would have to be, but we understand there would be questions about certification. Those would flow back to what is the critical design, what is that student learning model that we also look at? And then how do we reallocate staff? Right now, sixth grade's part of our element, the elementary level, but then we go to our secondary staffing, which, you know, is slightly different. How do we do specials? So there are these staffing pieces behind that that will flow then from that conversation. One of the driving forces behind this conversation is space in our buildings and moving to the middle school. Yes, we'd have to add to the current junior highs, but then it would open up approximately 1,100 seats at our elementary across the district. That helps us solve different challenges or allows for other opportunities for us to use some of those spaces in the building. And then actually, having sixth graders in a middle school concept aligns better with our guidelines from the USDA and how we feed the mind. We talk about portions and what kids need to be their best in the classroom. We just talked about that growth in those, that age range and that development. Turns out, I didn't notice, Allison shared it with us this morning, that the way they do portions for meals is
Put more on their plate.
Six, eight, nine, 12. So one of those things that we do in that area. We look at some efficiencies, cost-effective way to increase the overall capacity of the buildings across the district. And I would also add that you can say there's probably some cost effectiveness to the program that we want to do. And we're about to start this conversation about construction driving, how our buildings are configured. So I think that's an important piece to come back through and then goes through this entire conversation, convinces construction costs. When we do projects, how we do projects. Dwayne has again worked his magic on our spreadsheet that he's going to show you here in a couple of minutes. And then as I mentioned, we'll need to make additions to the current junior high schools and then reconsider additions or configurations of some of the elementary school projects where they fall into that timeline. So we make sure that we can keep the programs moving forward, make sure we have the space as we make this transition. And speaking of that, we can always slow down, but once we start, it's really hard to go faster. And so what we put here is what we believe is the quickest way to get this work done. If coming out of this meeting and the next meeting, we said we are ready to go, we can start the design work this spring on the renovations of our three existing junior high buildings. We would start the projects next spring and using the summer of '23, the fall of '23, the winter of '23, '24, the spring of '24, the summer of '24, we could have the current junior highs space-wise equipped and ready to move to a middle school or put the sixth graders into those buildings before the beginning of the '24, '25 school year. So we can expedite it. And like I said, we can slow it down if the board doesn't want us to do that quickly. But once we get past this cycle, it moves everything back in. And so we're really looking at if we wanted for the fall of '24, we need to start now. But if we don't start now, even if we would start the design work in the summer or the fall, we're talking the fall of '25. And so Dwayne's got us dialed in, but so we would be ready to go. And then just coming back to, Nick talked about this further engagement needs. We did a lot of great engagement with the community last summer, but understanding as we look at curricular design, there'd be more engagement work to do on that piece as well. Dwayne, can you talk through this just a touch before this was just
Okay.
It's hard to see, I know. I'll try to.
You ready for me?
Yep.
Okay, so if you scroll down just a little bit, the bottom three bars are the, at the bottom of that bar chart were there to start with, but they were blank. So I had middle school additions or new junior highs. So I went back and filled them in and said, okay, to get this done in 2024, we need to start tomorrow, which Jeff and I talked about today. We've got a plan to start tomorrow if you guys are cool with it, but to get the design teams on board. And I penciled in $9 million apiece. $9 million is a 30,000 square foot addition, thereabouts. So those costs can vary, or from $250 to $300 a square foot depending on what, how we use it. If it's all classrooms, it's pretty simple, you just add classrooms and restrooms. But I know full well that we're going to need, you know, science rooms. We're going to need maybe expand some cafeterias. We're going to need to change something in that building. And all three are different and we talked, we spent two hours today talking about a whole lot of things in any of these buildings that we need to change. But Amy said that, that $27 million comes from a line item that we had last summer for preschool centers. We had $30 million plugged in. So the decision to go with middle schools kind of takes that option away from you. But we still have dollars in the budget for preschool rooms at all the schools that we need to do. So we didn't take preschool away, we just took away the concept of doing a complete independent preschool center. And that was $30 million plus land costs and this is $27 million right now. So it's kind of an equal trade. I think that's how you make it work. The other thing I need to tell you is that this bar chart's not complete. And if you remember last time, there wasn't much on the second page. Now there's a little bit there. So what I've been doing is I had to slide a few projects down just a little bit, except for City High, West High, and Shimick, Weber, Garner. Couple of those we're going to do, we're going to start soon. I didn't fool with those, what I kind of messed with a little bit were the projects in '23, '24, and '25 and pushed them down a little bit. I still have to fill in the rest of this with all the other projects because what you've seen so far is about half the projects. You haven't seen the complete list that we worked up in '21, remember that, we had a point list. So those are yet to come and they're still there, but that's how I made this work. And the other part of it is we talked about cash flow and what we could stand to do. And at the bottom, we're starting out at about $12 million in '22, but then it wraps up to $31 million. And then $36 million, it was $39,000, we actually have another change into this $36. And that's pushing us a little bit and then it stays at, a year after that, it stays at right now at $25 million. So by the time I fill in some of those other projects, we're going to bid that $30 million per year. We can handle it. We've done it before. We are going to need a little extra help. It's the number of projects going on at any one time that they tell you how many managers you need just so they can stay on top of it. One guy isn't going to be able to handle it in '23, I don't think, one person, one need to.
But we have a plan for that.
Yeah.
We've had multiple construction managers in the past. You can pay for construction manager a couple and so it's not a hit to the general fund. So we can hire a person on temporarily, hire somebody outside to take control on that possibly and then build that into this budget. So it's not expensive. We won't be able to account for how we need it and then take it away when we were, when we got through that height, that height piece.
It's how we did it before, you know, a couple summers ago and we accelerated the plan, we did the same thing. And Jeff just pointed out, failed to mention, that we did kind of move more and up a little bit in the schedule because of the real pressure on that school and the number of students there in that area. So I did bring that ahead a little. And, you know, of course, we can get you out, you can download a copy of all this, but it's a work in progress. And, but what I can tell you is I'm pretty comfortable saying that if you want to open up middle schools all at the same time, we can get it done. We can have them ready to fall of '24. And I don't have any reservations about it. I'm sure we can do it.
Anything else I need to say?
No, if that's, that's, so, any questions?
So Dwayne, are you making that statement without having talked to architecture?
Well,
Or that, I'm not challenging them, they just weren't
Well, I think, I think the nature of the projects, Charles, is that they're additions. You know, they're pretty straightforward. The challenge is where do you put them? All three schools have site limitations, so we've talked that through. I think we have a pretty good idea where they'll go, a couple of options that want them. And the architectural firms that we want to use are the same firms that did, like in Northwest and North Central. That architectural firm has an intimate knowledge of that building, the changes that we've already made, we want to use them again. Same thing at Southeast, and we're just going to keep those same firms in place that have done the original renovations. And that's going to give us a length up, we're not re-educating. But what we have to do is we're going to have to sit down with these principals and with all the operations folks and educators and say, what does this look like? You know, it's one thing to add 20 or 25 classrooms, but what does it look like? Are they pods? Are they wings? Are they, you know, so we need to talk that through. But I don't see a real, any real obstacles. The biggest one is the site, North Central, for example, okay, tough site. I mean, it's beautiful, but it's tough. You know, I think we're going to end up moving the parking lot down to where the football field is. The football field's going to have to go over by Van El. But it works, okay? You know, if we can create a pathway through there, it's, but it works, but that's a challenge in North Central. Southeast, a couple of ways we can go there, we can go towards, what is that, First Street? Or we can go out back on the far southeast corner where we had the tent place, that's another location out by the band room. At Northwest, it's a lot simpler. We just go north from the cafeteria. There's a wing that was built on the east side of that building, there's a corridor there, works pretty slick. We just, I think tonight, you're going to approve a contract for that kitchen.
Or have they already?
Southeast.
No.
Southeast kitchen.
The design contract, I think, for Northwest, not down tonight. So we're going to be able to, I think, look at expanding the cafeteria at the same time, building an addition. So timing's pretty good on Northwest for this. On Southeast, we're just getting started, so we may need to expand the lunchroom a little bit. We can do that with change earth if we have to. But those are the kind of things we have to think through and I think, I think we're on top of it, Charles.
Okay, thank you.
You brought up a good point about, it was on your slide when you talked about what kind of configuration they're going to have. And then you said something about whether they're going to be pods or whatever. So that's just the only thing that you wonder if that'll be tough to sort out and then make the infrastructure for it.
Yeah, you know, when I think of pods, you think of, I want to go back to, maybe Garner. Yeah, Garner. You know, they pulled classrooms out, Nick was there, they pulled the classrooms out and created a center space. To me, that's a pod. You know, that's, that's how you do that. You can do it in groups and that's easy to do.
They kind of do that for Castle at Southeast too.
Yeah.
It's really cool.
I think that's the important point, right, is that we can choose the grade level configuration here this evening. But the work that has to happen then quickly is how we make sure it fits our teaching and learning goals, which is the reasoning behind this, right? And so the quicker then we can engage the educators into the conversation and say, now, how do we do this to enhance teaching and learning? That then informs this team's work on how they can put that together. So that would have to happen pretty rapidly, so it's wise of us to have this on, you know, now, so we could make that decision around configuration. So then the teaching and learning aspect can match the goals that the facility team will then construct.
Well, I'm hoping to make two phone calls tomorrow and set up a meeting for later in the week and to get them in here and start talking and get them thinking about it. And then we'll set up meetings with the educator.
Do the, do the junior high principals, are they aware of this idea? Are they excited generally or they?
Well, I think they have a lot of questions that we don't have answers to at this point because their questions are how to deliver the program, right?
Okay, yeah.
Adding onto their building, of course, is exciting, but they're going to have questions about, okay, well, how do we effectively serve sixth graders? How do we do this now in a six, eight model? And those are the things we need to process through with the teaching and learning folks around that.
Okay.
Definitely. We had a lot of great conversations today in the cabin and we did pull up the PowerPoint presentation, but we certainly told them it wasn't Word docs. And they had those kinds of questions. Would we stay self-contained? Would we be departmentalized?
Yeah.
Those are the decisions we would be coming together with you to make. But I think there's some excitement around it. There's a lot of questions, you know, it's kind of new to them, so.
But that's why you don't find it in the research, right? You're not going to find research around grade level configuration. What we're going to find data around is effective teaching practices. And that's what we think this gives us an opportunity to do, is to do more of those effective, high-leverage teaching practices in our building.
Yeah, that's the one thing I was going to add. We've been talking just in general as our junior high principals about what we can look at in regards to our schedule and how we can maybe look at instruction differently at this level anyway. Well, this just provides another kind of catalyst to that conversation, right? Because we're already going to have some differences potentially in our building, so then what could that look like? What could our schedule look like? What could the arrangement for our teams or how we decide to teach? I think all those things, I'm just weaving nicely.
So I, but I, I looked at this this afternoon and I saw we could totally get it done by fall of '24. I was like, there's no freaking way that's going to happen. But, I mean, that blew my mind that that was even possible.
How much money you got?
I got like a dime in my pocket. So I get on the question of, is basically two school years enough time to figure out all of that teaching and learning stuff? Like, that would be my concern. We could say, yeah, pull the trigger on the building now. And it's, I guess, in the end, you could have the schools ready before you were ready and they're just bigger in the short term, but is that doable? And then the other question I would have is, I know we bring a lot of folks in from other places. Do we have staff that have experience in the middle school? Like, can draw on some of that experience?
Paul, you actually, was principal or taught in Cedar Rapids?
I was in a six, eight building, yeah.
So if I can answer the first part, if we start the design work now and we get the discussion going, it's a year from now before we actually start the project. So that's enough time to have that discussion and get the design work done. If you decided to delay the whole project, you know, a year from now, you still can do that, but you'll have the, it'll be, the drawings will be ready to go.
And there's probably different decision points, right? So you can get some of like the, maybe the basic framework, so that way it's enough to get Dwayne and that team going. And then we work on some more of the intricate details as to, you know, well, what would that schedule look like? What would these pieces? But we can make some of those early kind of decisions within, okay, yep, we need to approach sixth grade a little bit differently. Here's how we're thinking and let's have that influence this wing. Or maybe it doesn't make sense that this is the sixth grade wing. Maybe it's better suited to do something for our eighth graders, right? You don't know depending on the, you know, what we're looking at.
We need to talk through some of the challenges, particularly the cafeterias, what it's going to do to them, what it's going to do to the juniors. Do we have enough to do with the, you know, that kind of, do you have enough space? So there's a lot of conversations we need to work through. Did you have something you want to say?
Well, as far as the timeline, you know, we did the elementary's in 15 months.
Oh, yeah, it's the same timeline as the new building.
Yeah, we could start, we could actually start in spring because we could start outside the building. So we could, we're talking 17, 18 months. I don't see a problem with that.
Start March, yeah, I'd avoid smaller than that.
Yeah, I, well, I think you all know, I mean, I've been wanting to do this since I got on the board, so I'm totally on board with a middle school configuration. I think, I mean, it offers us a chance to give a more well-rounded experience for all of our students. And I think we're going to specifically look at, you know, the teaching and learning at that middle school spot to help those kids. But if you think about it, if you're pulling out a grade out of the elementary, right? You're, somebody mentioned specials at the elementary level. They're busy, right? That helps them, right? So all the kids at the elementary level are getting a better product also. I, I think there's a lot of dominos that could fall positively as we just kind of think about it in this little vacuum, right? This one little spot, but I think it has so much benefit around the outside and totally on board with it, so.
Nick and I were talking before the meeting, it's this year's third graders that will be the first class to go in.
I was doing that math in my head too.
We were saying the third and fourth would go together.
I did the math as soon as I saw this slide.
So third and fourth would go together.
Yeah.
But I, she, I haven't told her yet, but she's going to.
I mean, I think it's exciting and will free up not only sort of some of the academics in elementary school buildings but space. And that's one of the most intriguing pieces in addition to creating a true middle school experience for our students that ultimately hopefully will help them in the long run. I'm just a little concerned, I mean, that Sean raised that we're not stressing the teaching and learning team out or stretching them further than what they can possibly carry along with their normal teaching and learning, but also focusing in on making sure we can hit this deadline.
We've been stressing them out for nine years, we're thinking.
I know, but I've only been on it before.
I think to the point, sorry.
It could be invigorating though. I mean, I think our junior high teachers, to a great extent, feel the same way that the parents do and that the kids do. That it's, you don't dig in in junior high enough and this could be a real meaningful change for our teachers. I understand it's a, it's a new system and everything, but man, that, that part can be really exciting as long as the admin is prepared to help them prepare for it. And it sounds like you guys don't seem that concerned about getting them ready.
Well, I think what I was going to say is to Nick's point earlier about it being a catalyst is a lot of these conversations have already creeped up to us. Well, I think what I was going to say is to Nick's point earlier about it being a catalyst, is a lot of these conversations have already creeped up to us anyways, right? About different parts of this and things that we needed to look at, and relationships are always huge in junior high or middle school, whatever format you're in. And so that being a significant driver, knowing how much time our middle staff already invests in those, and then even looking at the amount of curricular offerings that we're limited in having at the junior high now, if there's a way we can better address that, you know, does it inform any conversations around the way we typically look at semesters, trimesters, any of those things? Not to get us off track into that conversation tonight, but there's a lot of things that have already been brought forward around this conversation that I'd agree with you. I think it'll be actually something that everybody's excited to talk about and can have a good response to. Of course, there'd be some people that think, well, no, we should just stay with junior high, because that's what happens when anytime you change anything, right? You have people that don't don't want it to change and want it to stay the way it is. But I do think there's just a lot of elements of this conversation that have been brought to us before that it's time to have and figure it out.
Yeah, I'm on board, you know, I haven't always been on board with this, um, with the middle school concept, and it's not because I'm against middle school. I just didn't necessarily see a compelling reason, just because I knew there isn't a lot of data that says one thing or another. But going through this, um, yeah, the it is about the relationship and having a deeper connection to your school and having those opportunities. You know, also, in the back of my head, reading that Learners Without Borders book from Dr. Zal that presented ISB. I mean, if we really want to get better at what we do, we have to reconfigure what we're doing, because it it doesn't make any sense anymore, right? And so the more we um, individualize student learning, and I know we're not going to get the right twenty twenty four, but you know, when he's talking about, you know, a big chunk of students' time should be driven by them and what they're interested in, because we have the resources. You can go to Khan Academy and you can get instruction, and then a teacher's role doesn't have to be, it can change, right? It can be a mentor, it can be a coach, it can support kids on their own personal journey. So I think any opportunity we get to change our configuration towards something that just is going to work better for students. And the only reason stick with junior high is because that's what we've done, we've just always done it this way, and disruption is difficult. So so if it's an opportunity to just dig into our teaching and learning and think more about, you know, what what kid, what do kids really need? Obviously, we don't know what the jobs will be, so we can't pretend we're preparing them for a career, but we can get them ready for that kind of a world that says, hey, you've got to be creative, you've got to think outside the box, you have to be, all of our portrait of the graduate stuff, that falls right in line with with this. And and I don't think we're going to really get there until we start to think about our configuration and not just do things the same a way, just because we've done it the same a way, with no evidence that, you know, we're changing test scores or, you know, we're, because that's all not there, so. So it, you know, I hope it's, it is exciting, I'm very excited about it. Um, but despite all that other stuff, it is the relation piece, and that's something at my core, I know, is what's really important and what makes a difference, is if kids have a better relationship connection to school and their teachers, they're going to learn more. And so that's that's exciting.
So, I'm just I'm just curious, how are you envisioning sixth grade in this model, or did we say model, but am I using the right word?
Configuration.
Um, and because I know, you know, seventh grade is just so tough for students, you know, they're they're thrown into um, junior high and there's, they have this um, freedom that they may or may not be ready for. So are are you envisioning sixth grade being sort of like a transition, or um, where we're, it's not exactly um, seventh grade? We're we're sort of transitioning them from elementary to to more of the junior high?
Yeah, that's a great question, Dean, and I think we'd all have our bias, you know, in some way about how to look at that. And I think that's why we have to come together as a team and really look at what that solution looks like, right? Because I don't think there's any one of those we necessarily want to dictate, you know, from a leadership team perspective out here, that we'd want to talk to the junior high educators about what would make the most sense there. Because, I mean, my my initial reaction would be that the way we try to look at that sixth grade conversation, we can't just look at sixth grade, right? It has to, again, look at six through eight, what are we doing in six through eight? Let's look at the global aspect of that, knowing there's unique considerations for the grade that's now new to that building. And what does that look like? Because just like you said, whether it's seventh grade, and finally, junior high staff members talking about here in January, February, they feel like they're hitting the stride with the seventh graders, or if it's the sixth graders in that seat, right? Those are going to be unique considerations. So I think first we have to look at the overall model, and then how do we treat each of those things differently? But I don't think any one of us would probably say, hey, this is the way it's going to have to happen. I think we got to work with our principals and with the instructional leadership teams to say, hey, what do we, what's the best week should do here in Iowa City for our kids? I know that's a non-answer, but I think that's the way to approach it.
That's that's what I wanted to hear, and um, I I I think it just only makes sense to open up that space in the elementaries for the preschool, because, you know, parents who have preschoolers have elementary, it just, they have separate, it just doesn't make sense, so.
And that, hopefully, that would really help with specials. I I mean, I guess in my head, it seems like if you have more space, that's often the problem with specials, is hemming it in, you got to get all these, you know, so you have so many grades and they all have to use the gym, and so it it just becomes.
So what can we have to do to that? We're going to have to grow, too.
Somewhat, well, growth, right?
Growth is going to take some of that capacity.
Just to show that I actually pay attention to the homework you give us. Hey, there's a table in the document, analysis of elementary and secondary grade span configuration, figure three point four. Some type of the central characteristics of middle-level education, and to me, to me, when I read this table, it really incorporated the things that I that we've talked about here, that we've discussed here. And I assume things that the teaching staff and leadership staff, or Dwayne, want to really focus on to be able to do to get this done. And one of my requests is that in doing your your designing building work, we really make as much effort as you've done in the past uh, to make sure that we have buildings that can accommodate the kind of instructional programming that's uh, in play here.
I think that's an excellent point, Charlie, right? I mean, those are the research-based best practices that we want to be committed to, that we will be committed to. And then that's where, you know, this team has been outstanding, right? Is that it's like, okay, well, what do you need to be able to do, and then here's how we put it together to do that. And I think we, you guys as a group should be proud of about how you approached that conversation leading up to the fall in that same way, right? It wasn't just to build to build, it was how to teach and learning goals drive what that construction looks like. And so that's the same thing we need to take here now, now we're just down it down on the site-based level, right? And looking at that same conversation.
And one of the things that's really exciting from my chair is is that Dwayne's been working pretty closely with me to make sure that the costs, you know, from what we started with, almost a year ago when we started these discussions, haven't really changed. We just shifted them from what the project that may or may not be. But let's go back to November second of twenty twenty one, when our voters approved uh, the RPS and the PEPWOL that makes this discussion all possible, to have the funds available to do these, and have be in these buildings by twenty twenty four is a possibility. That's not lost on me, despite not being a teaching and learning person. I'll support that community support flows for all of this, and for us to have these discussions, I think that's pretty exciting, it's pretty cool.
Other questions or things we're thinking about?
I think we're going to be pleasantly surprised by what this can do for our school community. I think sixth graders will be more excited to know they're going to a school for three years. I think seventh graders are going to like that they're still there the night, that they've got people on both sides of them. I I just think it could be really meaningful, I really do.
I agree.
I think one thing I'd like to offer that that we should do with you guys is that as that teach and learning concept evolves is that we come back and share with you, hey, this is the group we put together, this was the conversation that was had, and this is how we plan to bring that, you know, that forward in an instructional model, too.
I also think that it's important for us to have sort of, I don't know, a highlight or a very brief discussion at the main board table.
Yeah.
Um, just because people don't always listen to these meetings, but pay more attention to our regular meeting schedules for meetings. So that way nobody thinks we're trying to.
Surprise them?
Yeah.
Or manipulate the system, sneak something in.
The sooner the better on that.
Get us tired at home somewhere with safe funds.
Well, I think that's part of the, you know, and Ruthine asked a good point, if we didn't really.
We're listening.
I know, Ruthine asked a question, but it's a good point, because one of the questions you all get is more members of, why do you have to do this? Or if we didn't do that, what? And so where is that? And, you know, if you remember the plan of last summer, what we talked about was originally, we projected that we would need to build a new junior high school.
Yeah.
If we were going to stay with three junior highs, we were going to have to add a fourth junior high, sort of like fever paddles.
And that just messes things up in a way that's not even.
Right.
Woo, that was going to be a doozy.
Well, yeah, to that point, there was forty million in budget for that new junior high, which we were able to put into the other projects.
And so you also get that question of, well, you're you're creating middle schools, so what projects are you stealing from? Well, you have the answers to that question, and so, you know, we know the pressure points you get, especially at the secondary level from the high schools and those. We've not dis, we've not disrupted their budgets at all.
And moved away from the centers.
Are completely intact, on the same timeline, and so.
Wouldn't this alleviate space constraints at some schools before?
It will.
They would have.
It will, yeah.
Yeah. Amy asked me what I did over the weekend.
Did a lot.
I did this, I went through every project, pluses and minuses, and then did the barter, but I had to do this first, the exercise, so. I mean, everybody did, you know, City High, West High, and the other thing I wanted to throw into the discussion was, I hear a lot of architects about new concepts in educational delivery methods and teaching and rooms and how the room is shaped.
Yeah.
You know, the whiteboards, or what, you know, whatever the new technology is, here's an opportunity to think about some of that. And the other concept that I'd love to try, if we can work it in, at the high schools, we created Commons at Liberty, we created Commons at City. We're going to build a Commons at West. Maybe there's a way to make a a Commons area or a friendly area in the in the middle schools as well. So, it's an opportunity to make some changes, and all three buildings, I think, can make a friendly area.
Brady, what do you think about all this?
He teaches twelfth grade.
Never mind, Brady.
No, I mean, I, you know, I did, oh, I, you know, in terms of the concept, the feedback that I got from people was older ones being positive.
Oh, good.
And I think there, I mean, it's a clever way to say middle school configurations and a concept, because I think there's a lot of excitement around the idea of a middle school concept. You know, we're really rethinking what grade six through eight would mean, and what note and tail, and what collaboration looks like, and um, so, yeah, all, you know, all positive logistical questions, of course, that's more people, I'm sure that's what the building administrator is, is, you know, hard not to start thinking just about all of those logistical things. And I, and, you know, of course, I opened Liberty, and I was on the transition team that did all that, so I, there's a lot of things that go into opening these spaces and rethinking that. Because that was really what we did at Liberty, too, was thinking, you know, and I emphasize collaboration, so what desks do we purchase? And what do the rooms look like, and what do the whiteboards look like? And it's so, I think it is probably smart to get it going, what we might feedback and start that conversation. I think the idea of, you know, regular check-ins is also really smart, I think is going to need, you know, there's just going to be things that come up that we haven't thought through. Teachers brought things up that I haven't thought through, you know, they're not stopping, you know, they don't, you know, roadblocks we can't get around. They're just little things that, you know, you got, you just got to think through. And so I think coming back and saying, all right, is it doable in fall of twenty four, or is it more sense in fall of twenty five? You know, probably still, you know, something to just consider in my experience, but I think in either of those scenarios, I'd keep going and get, you know, Dwayne going and start that conversation. Otherwise, fall of twenty four, if you don't start it, then it's not an option. I mean, I guess, well, I can say, you might as well start with that, but really, then, so, yeah, and that's positive from teachers. Excitement for sure, some questions about logistics and, you know, stuff like that, I'd do it as well.
Yeah, big change.
And that'll be part of our challenge, well, not challenge, but opportunities to not start on those logistics, right? I mean, and it's like, dream the model, right? Like, what do we want to do, and how do we make that happen? And then start to work backwards on answering those logistical questions, right? Because Brady's exactly right, that's where everybody's head jumps, is like, how do you do this? How do you do that? Well, let's first start with the teach and learning concept that we want to provide, right? And say, what what's the uh, concept we want to commit to, and then how do we get to those logistical answers around all of that? Because, but that's just natural, right? That's human nature, we're going to start thinking through the different things that come up and create challenging situations for us, so.
There's a, there's a different element, element of our work that we're doing right now, that I also think helps with the timing. And that's the work we're doing around portrait of an educator, Brady and Amy and I are on that. And the energy from the teachers in that room about how they want the ownership of what they're doing. As we continue these conversations, as we build that out, it provides a nice springboard or a nice segue into, hey, you helped us design what looks like to be a teacher overall. How do you peel off and continue to build that ownership of different compartments of the learning and the teaching that goes on? And so as we engage teachers around other elements, it's easier, and they see they're being listened to, they're being valued, they're seeing that reflected in the work. We can bring them at the table for their conversations in a way that they already have that buy-in that that we do value and and want to make sure they're creating environments that they're going to thrive in as well.
I like that.
You know, they're excited when they, when they say, we're not going to be able to finish our work in so many meetings, and we're willing to meet more.
Back from last night's engagement.
Yeah, be willing to meet more, I would say.
Right.
Yeah.
And I'm just going to tell you, I think we need some of these things, right? I mean, this is probably what we need, like, we've talked about apathy different times, we've talked to Brady about that, about, you know, the same old committees we have. Like, we do need a couple new things to reinvigorate people after coming off the pandemic, and this is a great opportunity right here. We have some other ideas, we know we're going to talk to you guys about here moving forward. But these are the types of things I think we need for, and just looking at the narrative in Des Moines, right? It's it's hard on people, it's hard on folks, like, what's something to get inspired about and be committed to about what we're doing here in Iowa City? So I I think these are overall good, good solid wins for us.
Yeah, I had a yes, 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 I have a Google form, and people are like, yes, 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 all positive. And then an email follow-up, who's that? He's like, I've got ideas about blocks, and we didn't even have a conversation. Then people, needles are turning around, and they're like, okay, how would the middle school project work, what is the schedule so far?
Yeah.
It was just good. And if at the end of the day, we get there, if we've got the buildings in place, we can slow back on the other part. Well, yeah, we could, right? We could just say, okay, let's, we need another year. If we have to.
I think we're fired up, what else do you need to know for us?
I like that.
Just that we can move forward, that's a big thing, and then we'll provide updates at the regular board meeting and make sure those get accounted for and.
Yeah, let's get that as soon as we can, just so we can get that out in the public.
Yep.
Conversation. I mean, it's important to say, yeah, let's get it going. I was just thinking, there's just a lot of those pieces that are different parts of the conversation, but we can start now.
Don't break us down, no, Brady. I remember those, I remember those.
You've been there, and you've done that.
No, I was concerned, the the staffing piece, I felt like may be the biggest roadblock. Because if you just look at it from the outside, you might think, oh, we're just going to pluck all the sixth grade teachers, hop them over here, right? We all know that that doesn't work, right?
Depending on the.
But all of the other talk that you guys have done, if we do that part all right, I think you're going to get teachers who are going to embrace it and want to potentially move, right?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I don't think, yeah, no, I mean, I think they're all excited about it, I think that part of it, because not everyone's going to be able to go.
Yeah.
I mean, but that's a, that's a good problem.
And one of the nice things about sixth grade teachers, they can teach anything. I mean, because you're, because you're, even if you're an elementary teacher, it's a case of endorsement, so you don't have the same limitations. As soon as we cross into the seventh grade, it's a different limitation than when we cross into, you know, high school. So, there is some flexibility there within just what that.
You probably have more opportunity to match uh, match those teachers to their strengths when there's more of them in one space, right? Then we can say, oh, you're the math person, you're the science person, you're the physics person. That that was how my middle school model was, we had like, it was like junior high light, you've got lockers in fifth grade, but then there's like half, you know, you were.
Switch to this teacher for part of the time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, well, we do have media, start to ten minutes, and I'd love everybody to get a little Iowa break, so I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, second?
All favor.